Good morning again. We're now going to call the April 11th San Diego County Board of Supervisors Special Meeting to Order. And again, I just want to remind folks that you all will have an opportunity to speak. You will have your two minutes. But I ask that you focus on, you know, making sure that we have board rules and procedures, and we ask our audience members not to whistle, clap, stomp feet, or anything that disrupts the proceedings. So I'm going to ask our clerk to confirm that we have quorum.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer.
Here.
Chairwoman Vargas.
Vargas here. So the only item on the agenda for this special meeting is discussion item one, a resolution of no confidence in Supervisor Nathan Fletcher and a request for his immediate resignation effective immediately. As the Chair of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors, my priority is ensuring that we are able to serve the people of San Diego. This board has demonstrated that we're committed to moving forward with the business of the people of San Diego County. It is clear to me that the only way to move forward is without Supervisor Fletcher on this board. Supervisor Fletcher has been absent for the past two weeks and unable to serve the people of San Diego or to answer for any of the troubling allegations brought against him. We encourage him to resign immediately so that he can focus solely on his treatment and so the people of San Diego can move forward with the representation they deserve on the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. That is why I called the special session on the board of the board and drafted a resolution of no confidence in Supervisor Fletcher. We have too much work to do for more than 3.3 million residents in San Diego County to be diverted by the actions of a board member who isn't here to answer for them. I want to reassure our community that as board chair, I am committed to continue to move our county forward with the most transparency and accountability, as my colleagues also have stated that. Our board will be careful considering our options in making these important decisions, and we will continue to lead so that we can meet the needs of all county residents. Our staff will continue to carry out the work they do every day, and I'm grateful for all 20,000 team members in the county for making sure that this county continues to move forward. Over the next few weeks, we're going to follow a process established by our board policy and our charter, which gives us options. I'm feeling that future vacancy for District Four, if we've mentioned those, there's three options. But in the end, united, we're going to, with the input of the community and residents of District Four, our board will determine the best direction for our county. With that, I'd like to move forward the motion for our Board of Supervisors to process, a motion to adopt discussion item number one.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from my colleagues? So we're going to go ahead and move with public comments.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have 31 requests to speak on this item, 17 in person, and 14 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received 116 ecomments, 107 in favor, and two in opposition. For any members of the public that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, starting with those that are in favor of this item. As your name is called, please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. I'll be calling you in groups of five, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and I'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward Mark, Alan C., Eric Weber, Mike Johnson, and Michael Brando. If I've called your name, please come forward. And you may come forward in any order.
Oh, good. I'm glad the cameras are on me. So, Mark, what's really sad is that although there's good reason that's been mentioned for Fletcher resigning immediately, this board is known for a long time, and many people have already told them, that Klaus Schwab, in this video, the leader of the World Economic Forum, states in the first minute, this is a title on YouTube, anyone can see, and he states in the first minute that he's penetrated governments, including Trudeau, half of, more than half of Canada's government, and France and Argentina. He mentions this himself. If you Google Nathan Fletcher World Economic Forum, you'll see that he is a member of the World Economic Forum. So that is treason. I've told the board, and many people have told the board about this many times, they've done nothing whatsoever. Neither has Kelly Martinez, who's our sheriff. It is her job to do that, and she hasn't. Had Jonathan Peck been elected as sheriff, he would have done it. Here is the Facebook page that shows his photo from 2019, I think it is. Anyway, you'll see it when you go there. And it has this quote by Nathan himself, which is, "Excited to be in Davos for the annual meeting of the World Economic Forum, cold but sunny." Also, someone just told me a few minutes ago, although I haven't confirmed this, that if you go on UCSD's site, or if you just Google Nathan Fletcher UCSD, his page will come up there saying that he's a member of the World Economic Forum. He doesn't have to be hung. He doesn't have to be jailed for years and years like he probably deserves. He absolutely cannot hold any position in government, and neither should anyone else that has any...
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
My name is Eric Weber. I am an athlete, coach, Spartan, attorney, and I have autism. I am here before you to demand accountability. In November 2021, Nathan Fletcher's district office received a demand for records. He refused to comply with the records request, violating the California Public Records Act. He and Lorena Gonzalez have some unethical stock laundry, which was discovered in Form 7-unders from 2020, the COVID lockdown era. During early 2020, as the pandemic started, Nathan and Lorena invested between 32,000 and 160,000 in the following companies: Zoom, CVS Health, LSC Group Incorporated, Cheemed, Apple, Hormel, Cisco, and Ballcore. In June, Nathan made substantial profits and sell off stock conveniently just as he loosened restrictions in the county. Zoom, 97%. CVS Health, 53%. Cheemed, 42%. Apple, 30%. Cisco, 16%. Ballcore, 15%. During March through June 2020, when most of these stock trades were made, Nathan received daily private briefings from county staff on the progression of the COVID pandemic by virtue of membership on a board subcommittee on COVID-19. And to this day, Nathan is still making a salary for a job he is neither performing nor capable of performing. His lust for power and wealth have destroyed this county. He has no honor. But the ones who are suffering the most are the veterans Nathan has disrespected by his portrayal of sexual assault as being a symptom of PTSD. If he cares about veterans, he should resign yesterday. Now, not May 15th, not four weeks, not four days. Now. Thank you. Fight for what is right. Live with no regrets.
Yeah. Next speaker, please.
So my name is Mike Johnson. I'm the executive director of SD Must for a local nonprofit. A lot of people have been coming to these meetings for the last few years, and some of you on the board are actually complacent in facilitating of the abuse of power of Nathan Fletcher. You appointed him to chair. You helped get him reelected. It's hard to really think that none of you knew what he was up to until it was disclosed to the public. So, but you have a chance to redeem yourself, and it's great that you actually are having this vote now, and I think a lot of people appreciate it from all of you. I mean, regardless of what side of the aisle you're on. The biggest thing is that I know after this vote, if, you know, if you all vote yes, you can't force him to leave, but there's some key votes coming up in May, including the chief administrative officer position, that you have the power as chair, Nora, to actually with postpone that vote, table it until he leaves. Don't let him vote on anything else that has long-term ramifications for the county. And that's a way that you can kind of help unite the county and bring everyone together. I mean, it's, this is a nonpartisan position. A lot of people here are, you know, all over the place as far as spectrum, but yeah, if he does, if you vote for him to resign and he doesn't, then you definitely need to table any votes where he can have any kind of, you know, one last ditch effort to have an effect on the people of San Diego County. I think he's done enough damage. I think you all agree on that, and I think everyone here can agree on that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speakers coming forward, I'd like to invite five additional speakers. Paul Henkin, Consuelo, Lou Uradel, Jeff No Way, and Luke. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Hello, Alan C. First up, before I forget, only the people in that district needs a vote of replacement. Please do not appoint anybody because you're disenfranchising the voters. No matter how much it costs, there is no cost great when it comes to the vote of the people, so please, let the people decide a replacement. That is so important because you're going to have two against two, somebody's going to kind of let the other person win, and that's not right. Let the voters decide the replacement for Nathan Fletcher. All right, let me go deeper why you need to fire Nathan Fletcher now. His wife, Lorena, or, I'm sorry, Lorena Gonzalez is current union member for the entire state. When she was rep the 80th, she passed AB 805, the way to vote, to benefit the unions. She passed AB 5 to benefit the unions. Why aren't there charges brought up on his wife to actually, right now, she is profiting off my, what I work hard for, what everybody here worked hard for, by passing AB 5 and AB 805? That is so corrupt. Nathan Fletcher sits at the college right now as a sexual predator, teaching class. He's still on his active duty at the college, and you don't put him in? A Democrat, Chulavista City Council Rep Jose Persiano actually has an admin job at the college, double dipping, and he's actually electioneering students. He has access to every student record at the college, guiding them how to vote Democrat. Why aren't there charges brought up on him? Do the right thing, let the people decide, and start looking to all those, what's going on between the unions and not working for the people, and that bastard electioneering our precious students at the college. That is so corrupt to have Jose Persiano work at the college, have access to everybody's student records. Look into it, guys. Make that your headline, because that is so corrupt. I yield back.
Next speaker, please.
Nathan Fletcher, resign immediately. Not in 33 days. Resign immediately. It has already been established for many on the earth in this local area that no confidence is held in Nathan Fletcher. Based on alleged reports from Nathan Fletcher's own office via ABC 10, it has implied that Fletcher is so mentally, emotionally ill that Nathan cannot be accessed for comment because he is physically quarantined, because he is in treatment. If Nathan was capable of caring about anyone other than himself or his gargantuan, yet transparent, false image, Fletcher would resign immediately. Others in the house of Gonzalez Fletcher would also be demanding Fletcher step down immediately. Yet just a few months ago, Nathan's housemate was boasting online how she was providing beer for Nathan to wash his food down. In other words, she was enabling Nathan's addiction, to which he only confessed after sexual aggression and assault complaints. Nathan would do well to immediately walk away and spend time with Nacho. Nacho is a beautiful, sweethearted dog. Dogs have the most loving effect. Dogs like Nacho love like no other, seeing through eyes of genuine love, empathy, compassion, and organic spiritual insight and wisdom. Leave Nathan now, and allow yourself to grow and to become whole by spending time with Nacho. May grace touch you, Nathan.
Nacho. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Paul Henkin. Nora, have you heard of SB 1100 last year? Please, you know, unless we're disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting, actually, please don't dabble us. How refreshing it was to hear laughter in the chambers during the business portion of the April 4th meeting. You are hearing the anger, the fury of the people of this county speaking for all those who are here or think similarly about Nathan's lies, his misbehavior, and his criminal acts. And then you have the county paying him extra money to do nothing until May 15th? You should be ashamed. And millions for his security? And he still doesn't know who torched his house last year? Ridiculous. I suspect defective EV batteries, by the way. Sandag is too big for his boots, and this happened again on Nathan's watch. Performance audit of the CEO is a good start, but the whole agency needs an overhaul. Its mission is transportation planning, not city planning. I'm concerned about the failed audits, exclusion of dissenters on the board, and now a passing proposal with four votes rather than a majority. That is not democratic. It's a public group, not a private club. Sandag's auditor found improper severance and bonus payments. The board apparently let it go. And then they approved contracts with that amount on bottom line, cost us at least 250 million. Nora, please restore it to its legal functions, and it needs regular audits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Consuelo, the most foolish species on the planet. You care more about a man's extramarital affairs instead of him violating his oath of office. You care more about his personal family issues than you do about the injustices that have gone on in these chambers for years. You had absolutely not a fucking thing to say about his criminal actions of having a non-threatening woman be assaulted at his command under his orders on November 15th. I call you out, too, Kelly Martinez. You care more about a Hollywood-scripted political scandal than you do about how he and the others on this board have conducted county business with conflicts of interest galore. You didn't care about how he and the rest of them almost entirely destroyed our county. It's still in shambles. You don't care that he is a member of the World Economic Forum, but you give a fuck about his phalanges fiddling someone's private. Saul opposed it, read, "Mission complete. Fletcher's not a mission. He's a drop in the fucking bucket. The mission is ending homelessness, standing up to the injustice, exposing that we are all slaves to this tyrannical system that keeps, keeps us all down under their control." So how about the mission be exposing that the whole fucking system is a racket? This scandal is just another charade to deflect from something even bigger, but you're also easily manipulated and distracted to even see it. Fletcher's just another pawn playing his part for the elite. A creep, but a clever man, playing it sloppy on purpose. The very few who are paying close attention know he's just another sacrificial lamb. The media, who sell the bullshit, and holding press conferences and interviews with people, some of whom I've never once seen in these chambers, yet are calling for his resignation. The snakes and the fakes turning on each other, all to keep face, to keep the trust of their gullible status slave supporters. These fork-tongued snakes portray themselves as self-righteous and ethical, along with the phony baloney activists, wishing him well on Sunday than throwing him under the bus on Wednesday. Every nonsensical action happening is all deliberate. They create the chaos to keep you in the dark.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I feel like this is a long time coming. Now, these allegations of sexual assault by Nathan Fletcher on a subordinate at work, that's your legitimized reason and rationale for this vote of no confidence. But do we really need new evidence of no confidence? Nathan Fletcher is the guy who assaulted the First Amendment by declaring misinformation of health crisis, and all that misinformation he claimed, well, it turned out to be true. He made a San Diego County an abortion sanctuary in a state that already has the most lenient baby-killing laws on the books. He led the charge on erasing and redefining what it is to be a woman by including men in that definition for San Diego County, at the same time effectively obliterating Title IX. He pushed to require new county employees to be vaccinated, and even tried to manipulate business owners here in this county to mandate vaccines for their workers. And wouldn't you know it, the vaccines worked as well as Nathan Fletcher did. But for me personally, what did it was when Nathan Fletcher came out and said he was stepping down, and the sole reason for doing this was for the best interest of his family. See, it's really funny, because when I opened my gym in May of 2020, and I did it for the best interest of my family, I got arrested for it. And it's funny, it wasn't even a law on the books against it. His resignation should be immediate. He should have no more input on this board. The taxpayers shouldn't pay another nickel. Vote no confidence and show the fortitude it takes to be leaders.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Luke. I'm here to demand the resignation of Nathan Fletcher. I think everybody here needs to do the same thing. I'd also like to address the unconstitutionality of your policy that doesn't allow us to encourage each other to clap. There is case law. Kay, in 1970, has stated that we do have the constitutional right, we have the First Amendment, and that protects our ability to express ourselves at these meetings and to encourage each other. And you need to revisit that, or you need to stop slamming that goddamn gavel down, because we have the right, and you don't get to take that away from us.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in favor. Matt Baker, Natalie Ficarra, Sarah Rogers, Lee Rogers, Melissa O'Connor, and Melissa Grace. If I've called your name, please come forward.
My name is Jeff, and I'm certainly not falling for any intended deception here that this corrupt, criminal board has suddenly gotten wholesome and pure with calling for Nathan's resignation. What's clear is there's more coming down the pike regarding Nathan, and these slimy board members are looking to slip away and distance themselves from what has yet to come forward. Right, Jim? It's just a feeling, but the more one digs to find truth and then has the fortitude to share that truth with others, the more one's vessel turns into a living, breathing, polygraph instrument of sorts. Y'all should try it. I'm certainly no fan of Fletcher, as I've made very clear here many times, but I hope everyone realizes that he may very well be the intended fall guy here. Consuelo touched on it earlier. I mean, after all, we are currently in the sacrifice seat, the sacrifice season for these occultists, Joel. Nothing here is what it seems. There's that saying about how evil has within it the seeds of its own destruction. Well, we are witnessing that here to some degree. Regardless of whether or not Nathan was intentionally set up for this fall, we'll take it, because we are at the stage where those with nefarious intent will start to eat their own. So whatever the intent, whatever this was intended to be, we'll take it, but we'll take it as the nefarious House of Cards finally beginning to crumble. Nathan may be the first domino on this board, but Jim, Nora, Tara, Joel, Helen, and staff, you all know full well what you've been a part of. So let the dominos fall. Let the truth shine through. We, the people, do not consent to vaccine genocide, to 15-minute cities, to CBDCs, or any other UNWEF agenda. It is all treasonous. Let us collectively turn this ship around. Hallelujah.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Tara, and I'm an advocate, and I've...
Ma'am, I don't have a speaker slip for you? Did you, did you submit a speaker slip?
Uh, no, I didn't, but do I need, do you need to get one from me before I can speak? Or can I just speak and keep going? Is that fine? Thank you. My name is Tara. I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, the speaker process already closed, so you're happy to go ahead and send any comments at this time? There's a process. And...
Oh, okay.
Just explain to her what that is.
The requests, request to speak are due before we begin public comment on this item. Request to speak are due before we begin public comment on this item, so we can no longer accept requests to speak on this item. Okay, thank you.
So feel free to reach out to my office, and unfortunately, that's a process. Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
...is also a...
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and follow up with our office. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Thank you. Can you go ahead and close it, please?
Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Dr. Sarah Rogers. I am a retired psychologist, retired naval officer, and retired federal civil servant. My doctorate's in clinical psychology and industrial organizational psychology, and my expertise, one of them, is in combat-related PTSD. I am here with the sad position of supporting your resolution of no confidence, and I thank you for bringing that forward. It is no insignificant thing to be treated for combat-related PTSD. It is a distraction. There are great facilities in the VA that Nathan Fletcher can avail himself of, and he does not need the county's support to pay for that treatment. So I encourage you to go forward with this resolution of no confidence, and I thank you for doing your due diligence in leasing your own members to be able to fulfill their duties. I own a home in the Mount Helix area. I am one of his constituents. So thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Lee Rogers. Along with Sarah, I own a home in District Four. Also, we also have a home in District Five. I'd like to thank Jim Desmond for being the first one to come forward and ask for the immediate resignation of Nathan Fletcher. That was, that was the right thing to do, and I appreciate that the Chair has placed this resolution of no confidence in here. What I ask everyone to do is not just pass this, I ask this to be passed unanimously, because we do need to move on. And those of us who are in District Four, I don't know how many people are speaking for District Four, but there's nobody from District Four sitting up at this group. There's nobody here from District Four because he chooses himself over his family. There's nobody here from District Four because he chooses himself over all of you. There's nobody here from District Four because he chooses himself over everyone out here. There's nobody here from District Four because he chooses himself over everyone in the county. I urge immediate resolution approval, and I also want to agree with the gentleman who spoke earlier. Let's take the next step. What are the things that you can do, once this is signed, to make sure that we're doing the things to move forward? I agree with you. There are a lot of things we need to do. We need to do this soon. Nathan, you need to resign today. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Natalie Ficarra, and I'm a United States Air Force veteran who served overseas during Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. I also reside in District Four under Nathan Fletcher's tyranny. I had no idea who Nathan Fletcher was until three years ago, when my common sense was under attack, when things I knew to be true for almost 40 years of life, living all over the world, was put into question. I have never met you, wherever you are, Nathan, but I feel like I know you. You see, in 2002, while deployed, I was supervised by a man, and they use that term loosely. His name was Sergeant Webb. And he groped me daily, and he would make sexual aggressive remarks to me. One day, I asked him to please stop, and he did. He did. He created a new position for me. I now got to work alone, isolated, in a small room from 6:00 PM till 6:00 AM, doing menial work that a hired third party would typically do. He even did me a favor and referred me to see mental health. And if anyone here has been in the military, if your supervisor refers you to mental health, especially when you're trying to create a successful career for yourself, that is not the business. Politicians use their military service in clout, and sure, why not? We're supposed to have integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all that we do, and sometimes there's exceptions. Sometimes dirtbags somehow make it as far as becoming supervisor of District Four and running for state senate. 20 years later, I'm reminded that leaders are pigs sometimes, and it's unbecoming of a public official and combat veteran to claim PTSD as an excuse to get out of bad moral behavior, and our tax dollars should not be spent protecting an abuser. I've never met Nathan, but I...
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the speaker in opposition, Michael Hefner.
Is it my time or no?
Please go ahead. Please go ahead.
This is Matt Baker. Oh, we are sick. We are so sick. And I call upon the Holy Spirit. I call upon the Holy Spirit to enter into this room. I call upon the Holy Spirit to heal this town, this sickness that has fallen upon us. We are crumbling. We are weak. We are in decay. The roads crawl and crumble at our feet. The homelessness falls like leopards to the wayside. The politicians laugh and steal our money. The people abuse the politicians, tyrants, and likewise, you abuse us. I call upon the Holy Spirit now. I call upon the Holy Spirit to stop this sickness. And I mean it. I mean it. I want it to stop the sickness in my heart and I want it to stop the sickness in your heart and I want it to stop the decay. This town is falling apart. The roads are crumbling. You fill them with little pieces of tar and call that leadership? If your house was crumbling, would you decide to get a swimming pool instead of fixing the roof while there is a homeless transient sleeping on your couch? No. We must fix this broken building now. I know it's International Gnome Day or whatever day it is. Every day is some international day of bullshit. Every day is fix this building, fix this city, fix these streets. And until that's done, I don't want to hear another word about it. You all voted for Nathan Fletcher.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up.
Your time is up, sir. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Melissa. I am so disappointed why we're all here. I'm really sad that it took sexual assault to find some common ground, but I do commend you for making this decision to gather and get rid of Nathan. It's great. So I just wanted to do a little walk down memory lane so that Nathan can never hold office in California or our nation again. And Tara's smirking, but I think she needs to be reminded of all of the horrid policies that Nathan brought into this land that we just prayed for, that is crumbling literally and imploding at the seams and actually Nathan's like a bird that has consumed too much rice and the rice represents himself and he's literally exploding from the inside. And it is not fun to watch, but we are seeing him self-implode and this is what pride does to us. We come here humbly. These are our chambers. I own this building. Everybody here owns this building and we come here humbly and we ask for our life back over the last three years, which we actually don't get from you. We can live our life without your permission. But it's sad that you don't recognize the effects that you have on people and Tara can't even look at me. Okay, just a little reminder, my 28 seconds. He made San Diego County an abortion sanctuary. He redefined women to include men so that our females in prisons. Is that funny, Tara, that your other female prisoners are now subject to being attacked by men in San Diego County prisons? Or if you're a woman seeking abuse and you go to an abuse shelter, you can have a man in that shelter? I'm done.
Next speaker, please.
My name's Melissa Grace. I'm a resident of District Four. I'm also the founder of San Diego Rise Up. I've been up here many, many, many times before you all over the last few years, attempting to express our grievances to the government about, in particular, Nathan Fletcher. I'm actually not going to spend any more time talking about Nathan Fletcher because he's insignificant. And when you talk to the members of the community, you start to realize that every single one of you here are insignificant also because your constituents have lost their vote of confidence in every single one of you. Because the majority in the middle, the voices of the majority in the middle are tired of playing by the duopoly of red, blue, Democrat, Republican. They're looking for actual change. They're looking for leadership. They're looking for healing in our community. And I would like to think that you guys are interested in that also. I'm reading a book right now. It's called The Happiness Policy Handbook. It's how to make happiness and well-being the purpose of your government. The people are coming together. There are thousands of people that have come through this building over the last couple of years. I would suggest, and I will invite myself as tribute, to volunteer, to brainstorm with you guys about how can we bring more resilient communities? How can we heal this divide in our community? Because that's what we need. We don't need more government. We need more hyper-local action. We need more citizens taking pride and taking power in their communities. Can we all agree that that is a way forward?
Yes.
I haven't, I mean, I've been here in front of you guys many times. Not once have any of you reached out to the common sense, rationally-minded people in the middle to come together because this is our county. I'm committed to it. I would like to think that you guys are too. So let's come together and do this and set an actual example. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
There has to be a question and answer time, some point in time. There must answer question one of these days. It's for the health of-
That is your force warning?
I don't care. I'm out of here anyway. Listen for a change. Just give it a whirl.
My name is Michael Hefner and I did fill out the wrong form color and maybe that was meant to be because I guess I am the last speaker. I am here and I want to thank you for bringing this meeting together and everything and I appreciate your opening words to have Nathan Fletcher resign immediately. I implore all of you guys as his peers to vote for him to resign immediately and we know that this would occur in any organization out there in the public sector and through any organization that's out there. If this egregious act would have happened someplace else, they would have had him resign or at least go on administrative leave without pay. So I think by listening to the peers from you, that hopefully he will listen to that and leave his post immediately. Now, on going forward for District Four, we're looking for a replacement. I know that you're going to have to find someone to be put in this and we just had an election and I look at Amy Reichardt as that person since she was the one who did run against him and has more invested in that particular district. If for some reason you decide not to appoint Amy Reichardt to that position, then I do implore that you guys look at having a special election because the people in District Four would nominate Amy Reichardt, hands down, because we probably have at least 20 people that would be running in that particular spot. So that's what I have to say and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin our comments after the beep. And remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We'll start with our first caller.
For the first caller, Jim Ellis. Your device might be muted. We'll come back to that caller.
Please go ahead.
Me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My name is Daniel Schmihovski. I am more concerned about the irrational, angry mob than I am of Nathan Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher has admitted to an affair. The jury is out on Mr. Fletcher. It's a civil process that must go through. We have not heard from the woman involved. Let me mention, let me, let me mention most importantly, this is not about vaccinations. This is not about the World Economic Council or UCSC or abortion or Jim. This is not about any of that. This is about a man that had an affair-
With a subordinate.
Period. And now, 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 there are allegedly sexual harassment and sexual assault. But we don't know yet. We don't know the outcome of the civil trial, if it goes to a trial or if it goes to a judge or jury. We don't know what will occur at the end of July.
We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hello, this is Catherine Rhodes in the San Diego Courter. Page seven, Article five, powers and duties of the Board of Supervisors. Section 500.3 states the board may suspend from office at its discretion an officer who has been indicted for official misconduct and offense involving moral perpetuity or an infamous crime. In closed session, please ask Nathan Fletcher to resign immediately and please discuss asking the San Diego County DA, Summer Stephens, to open the sexual assault investigation and possibly indict him after talking to the victim of sexual assault in a public building. A criminal indictment by the DA would allow the rest of the Board of Supervisors to suspend Nathan Fletcher from office immediately for moral perpetuity or an infamous crime. Supervisor Fletcher has already made three separate statements to the public and Board of Supervisors when he was supposedly clustered in an outstate rehab in treatment for alcohol abuse. Therefore, for his mental health, we all have to wait until Nathan peaks. The first time was when he said the lady was a liar and looking for money. Second, when he resigned from MTS. Third, when he resigned from San Diego County Board of Supervisors as of Nathan peaks. A criminal indictment would allow him to have to resign immediately. So please ask the DA to look into the matter, you know, is this a crime? It seems like a crime from what he said and I don't know if it's been under investigation yet or not. So this is a path forward that you can use in closed session and you guys don't actually all have to agree to it. One of you, any one of you, can just ask the DA yourself. It only takes one of you to, you know, to do this and that threat would make him actually resign immediately. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, San Diego. This is Mike Barello speaking. Regarding the vote of no confidence, I entered an e-comment with a link to the grand jury complaint I submitted on December 7th of 2022 over malfeasance of county government during the so-called COVID emergency. I urge San Diego residents to read this complaint, the exhibits attached, and my correspondence with the grand jury. Of course, the complaint was denied. Consider Nathan Fletcher's legitimacy as a leader these last several years, the influence he had over other supervisors, staff, health, and human services, all the decisions, and I'll go as far to say the grand jury itself. LNC summed it up, stolen valor. This morning, I wrote an email to grand jury foreman Ed Lopatton, expressing these same concerns and asked that he reopen and revisit case number 21, my complaint. I further urge all San Diego County residents who agree to write or email the grand jury and request the same. Regarding Fletcher, removal is in order, if not immediate resignation. Why has the board not already stated, started removal procedures? He violated willful misconduct in office, which satisfies one of the four reasons to remove under San Diego County Code. Thank you.
Now, hear from the next caller.
Oh my God, will you please shut up with your fucking applause, Kevin Stevenson? I'm mad as hell for multiple reasons. First off, I agree with the general consensus that Nathan Fletcher should resign because what he did is not good, what he did is unforgivable, what he did is disgusting. Let me make that very clear. However, let me also make clear, I am not allies with any one of you disgusting grifters. Your grip has gone on too long. I have not forgotten the batshit comments that you guys have given in the past. Louis, I have not forgotten the time over a year ago when you wanted to use your Second Amendment right. What does that mean? That means shoot people. That doesn't mean anything else. Go back to your fucking gym. Also, I haven't forgotten the years of bitching about, oh, I have to get a COVID vaccine to participate in public society? How dare you tell me to do the bare minimum to not spread a deadly virus everywhere? Jesus Christ, what is wrong with you people? God, every single time you fucker speak, I'm more convinced that you are just paid crisis actors. Because I don't know, like, San Diego County does not agree with you guys. Amy Rekert, she got 30% in the last election. She lost by a two-to-one margin. An appointment of Amy Rekert to that seat would be a mental finger to the constituents of District Four because the constituents of District Four do not want some anti-vax Sarah Palin reject representing them on the County Board of Supervisors. Hell, no. I call for a special election because that is the only way that District Four is going to get the representation that they need and deserve. Nathan Fletcher needs to resign and we need to tell the-
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
We love you, Kevin.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Joseph Weber. I just want to let you know that I agree with a vote of no confidence for Nathan Fletcher and I also nominate Amy Reichardt to take that seat in the interim if we can have a special election to let District Four get their vote in. But I also want to remind you, Board of Supervisors, that, you know, Nathan Fletcher put together a framework for our future that never mentioned our Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of California. But it did refine, redefine a woman. It did say we had to train critical race theory and it did say we're champions for killing babies in our county. I think we should all think about a no-confidence vote here. There's really a no-confidence vote on every Board of Supervisor who unanimously voted for these things that Nathan Fletcher was for. Tara, let me, let me just remind you, when you were called up by Nathan Fletcher for a vote because he knew he couldn't get his third vote and you, let me paraphrase, you said, "I'm voting for whatever you're voting for, Nathan." And Joel, who went on KUSI and said, "It was easy to pick Nathan as a chair because I worked with him in Congress and I've worked with him all his life," although I guess you never noticed that he had PSD or that he had an alcoholic problem or that he had propensity to harass people. But you said it was no problem picking him because he- But you said it was no problem picking him because he knew how to get the money. And we kept telling you, Joel, it's not about the money. It's about our rights as the people.
Now hear from the next caller.
Hi, this is Pam. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, hi, this is Pam. I support the resignation of Nathan Fletcher now, of course, right? Not on May 15th. The last three years of this tyrannical and narcissistic un-American rule over this county has been despicable. Nathan now owes the people of District Four and the rest of the county his immediate exodus, his apology and his accountability for his harmful decisions and acts. His history proves he has been detrimental to this county with his change in a political party to promote the agendas of he and his wife and other leftist elites. This is early in a new term. The people in District Four are entitled to a new election with the hope of electing a person of character and integrity. The option of the remaining board members choosing an individual is unacceptable as there are outside political and ideological forces persuading Nora and Tara to choose a specific individual, which would not be the best decision for the county resident. Supervisors, do not act as if $2 to $4 million for a new election will be a burden on taxpayers. This amount is nothing compared to the $1 billion this county spent on COVID and people died anyway. Not to mention the $1 billion spent on the homeless without resolution. All this money was spent as guided by Chair Nathan. District Four residents should be given another chance to correct the debacle that has Nathan and his wife in. Tara, Nora, do you have anything to confess? It would be great to clear as many seats as possible at the same time.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
This is Richard Golden. First, I do support Nathan Fletcher resigning immediately. However, I do not know all the facts of this case. I will say it is noteworthy that the two corporate establishment Democrats, Supervisor Lawson Reamer and Vargas, now want to make a righteous vote to say, wow, we want Nathan to resign. Also, Jim Desmond, your selective anger and outrage whenever a Democrat does something, but total silence whenever a Republican does something is definitely noteworthy. You'll get good reviews on that. And then finally, Joel Anderson. What about Joel Anderson? Don't worry, he just allegedly slapped a woman in Sacramento. But that's okay because he's a Republican. And finally, I support an election to fill this place, not nominating Amy Riker. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board. My name is Kathleen Wickett. I'd like to acknowledge first that recovery is hard. It challenges a person in addiction on every level. And acknowledging that you're addiction is a step toward recovery. Drugs that are psychoactive and addictive compromise an addict's judgment. Perhaps that underlies the decisions that transition those who served from the seat of power to having little to no say over the policies imposed upon them. I hope this will be an opportunity for the board majority to rethink the policies previously supported that were spearheaded by Nathan Fletcher. The board's majority support of those policies resulted in blinding the board and the public to the diminishing returns, unintended consequences, and negative externalities. Worst of all, it's suborned the county's responsibility to enhance the lives of residents and protect county lands. Outcome evaluations would have shown supportive policies. Supporting those policies were destructive and costly. Taxpayer dollars should have been spent on supporting healthy and safe community environments and returning power to the people. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
He's the name, Audra. I'd like to give Nathan a warm handoff. And you guys basically can remove him. You always act like your hands are tied. He's been engaging in willful misconduct. And we know that the entire county has turned upside down for the past several years. And you guys have all been complicit in it. And you have held him up on a pedestal. And you know damn well that there was signs to you guys. Because even you, Joel, you claim that you want him to be Chair. But then when we have a meeting with you, you talk about how he's taking all the money from your district. So you guys are so toothpaste, but then you sit up there and support this man and every decision he makes. This has to do with everything he has had his hands on, pun intended. And if you guys don't have a special election, then you're not doing what's right for the people. And I've asked you guys to do a community forum with every single supervisor, even when Nathan was there. And you guys can do that. You would have to set it up, but you could do it. And that way, you can engage with the people to show them that you actually care what happens. Because there is no confidence in any of you guys to make a willful, a sound mind decision in anything that has to do with this county, especially when you hold Nathan up, especially when it takes you this long to actually do something. Immediately, you guys should have started the process to remove him, not say your hands are tied and act like you can't do anything. Just like you're saying, well, we may, may not do an election. You better do an election because the people better have a choice. Otherwise, you're going to put in whoever you want that's going to continue to do whatever you guys decide, Tara and Nora. So I ask that you guys actually pretend to care about the people. Get a special election, remove him immediately. We don't need to wait and have him, like, tell him to resign. You have the power, quit acting like you don't. Get him the fuck out.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, this is Peggy Walker. Nathan Fletcher is another example of someone in power forcing his will on someone else without their consent. I recall Nathan Fletcher did this in other cases, including sourcing marijuana commercialization on the unincorporated areas of our county without the people's vote or consent. I recall at the time that Nathan's key staff person was directly involved in the marijuana industry. Not a coincidence, I don't think. I would ask you supervisors now to look deeply at that decision and consider its ramifications. We vote for you as our representatives, but not as our dictators. We expected you to listen when we dissent and to consider why we dissent. I remember Fletcher investigated spending all marijuana tax revenues into the general fund to the detriment of those in the rural outback who would bear the burdens of marijuana businesses. He also voted to reduce that marijuana tax to a lowly 2% to accommodate the marijuana industry. We're tired of this kind of personal catering to special interest groups. I also wonder why some $2 million in taxpayer money was spent on security for Mr. Fletcher, taxpayer cost. Are we paying this for others or all supervisors? And who approves such expenditures? He should be removed immediately, and he should not have a vote from the county administrator. If we can spend $2 million on Nathan's security, we can certainly spend it on a special election. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
This is Trig, and I have no confidence in a special election or any supervisor. So abandon hope, all ye who stand by the skeletons in Nathan's closet. That's you, silent closet here, Joel, the longtime colleague in crime with Nathan since their assembly days. Here's a timeline of Nathan Fletcher's dirty deeds. May 2021, Nathan begins following alleged victim on social media. January 3rd, 2022, Larina vacates state assembly seat and fundraises millions for Nathan. January 12th, Nathan's house fires and millions in security. December, people on Instagram accuse Nathan of cheating on his wife. October 5th, alleged victim worries about public exposure. November 21st, Nathan considers state senate. December 5th, Nathan sends alleged victim another DM. December 13th, Nathan steps down as DOS Chair. February 6th, 2023, Nathan launches Senate campaign and also allegedly ends his victim's career at MTS. March 26th to 29th, Nathan lies about PTSD and alcohol abuse for paid leave into Senate campaign, admits to cheating, and resigns as MTS Chair the same day a lawsuit was filed against him by a former MTS employee. The truth is that Nathan stepped down as Chair and used the excuse of running for Senator because he knew he had to get away from the Board of Supervisors in order to cut his connection to the MTS Board. Lying, scumbag criminal on the run. But we'll keep fighting them all. Like Nathan Fletcher. Remove him now.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hey, it's Jim. A vote of no confidence, huh? There was no real secret about Nathan Fletcher. So many of us knew. Maybe we didn't know the details of a possible harassment, but we saw the lies and the underlying corruption. He actively ignored most of the citizens as they came to speak at the Board of Supervisors meetings, but the other board members were silent. Fletcher gaslit the room often, on one occasion claiming certain speakers were spouting anti-Semitic statements when he knew he was misrepresenting the speakers. But the other board members were silent. He continually started to discord in the chambers, blaming and shaming others. But the board was silent. Fletcher called for the removal of one citizen, resulting in the physical abuse by a dishonorable sheriff and the wailing cries of a woman in the adjacent hall. But the board was silent. Fletcher called for the removal of one citizen, but the board was silent. For so long, Tara and Jeff wore their hip yellow shirts. For telling of a day we'd all be fed up with Fletcher, but the board was silent. One caller, funny enough, even tried to stretch the mind of the close-minded board, informing them that the benevolent universe was actually coming through the voices of the upset citizens, warning them of impending doom they could not see. But the board was silent. Michael, Mark, Audra, Consuela, Paul, Oliver Twist, Truth, and more, they all tried and tried in the face of miswork, disinterested representatives, long-waists, and chiding and deriding board members. They kept trying, and the board was silent. It took a public disgrace for the board to get righteous and proclaim the moral high ground. It's too late for Fletcher, and it may soon be too late for the remaining board members. We see through you too. You can't escape the truth, and you can't escape the will of the people. Your best chance is to start listening to them and to start truly representing them. It's your only hope before the vote of no confidence comes upon you.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to my colleagues for comments, I want to ask our county council, does the charter allow us to remove Supervisor Fletcher at this time?
No, it does not. It does not, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer?
First, I really want to thank everyone who came out to speak today. This is obviously an incredibly important issue for our entire community because democracy is really important and representation is important. And the jobs that we do to serve the public are really important. And people deserve representation and they deserve leadership that they can trust and that they can count on. And I know that personally, I am incredibly sad and disappointed and frustrated and angry at the situation we now find ourselves in today because my former colleague betrayed that public trust and acted in a way that is just unacceptable for someone who has been entrusted by the public to make incredibly important decisions that impact all of our families, all of our communities, and all of our lives. And I'm certainly very supportive of this resolution today, asking him to resign immediately because we need to get back to the business of serving our community, of serving our county, of making the kinds of decisions that people have entrusted us to make, of tackling the major issues that we face in San Diego County, the issues of homelessness and the issues of affordable housing and the issues of climate change and our beaches and our coastlines and equity and so many challenges that people in our community are counting on us to address that we cannot address when we are stuck dealing with a crisis that we did not create, that has been imposed on us by irresponsible and reprehensible behavior. And it is time for us to move on and to get focused on the business of fighting for folks who need us and who need our voice. That's why I called on MTS to initiate an independent outside investigation. Very supportive that they've already begun that effort and looking forward to that effort coming to some fruition so we can have an independent eye on what did occur and we can know the facts. But regardless of that, the time is now to move on. I appreciate the clarifying question of my colleague that we are not able to remove Supervisor Fletcher from office. That is something only he can do. He must resign. We cannot do that for him. But very happy that my colleague and our leader, Chairwoman Vargas, brought this resolution today to make it clear that Supervisor Fletcher will not be voting on any other items before this board. I personally would not participate if he did attempt to do so because we're moving on. I know that this work that I have committed to do is something that I take very, very seriously. I very firmly committed that there is zero tolerance for sexual harassment or sexual assault here at the county or in our community, that women need to be respected on the job. So I know I am personally, again, just to say, very sad and disappointed and angry. I know that's a sentiment that's been shared with me by hundreds and hundreds of people who've reached out to me over the last many weeks and people who counted on and believed in Supervisor Fletcher, as well as people who did not support him at all in the first place. I think there's a shared sentiment on this issue across the county. I just really want us to get back to work, get focused on the business of serving our community, and get focused again on what we're here to do, which is to make San Diego County a better place for everyone. So with that, I'd like to make a motion and thank you again for your leadership. Okay, great.
A motion and a second, but thank you. Supervisor Fletcher, Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. I, I too, I definitely support the resolution of no confidence in Supervisor Nathan Fletcher and request his immediate resignation, effective immediately here for the betterment of San Diego County. And as expressed by my partner here, Tara Lawson Reamer, the fact that we've got a lot of work to do here at the county. We've got a lot more other things to focus on, homelessness, mental health, our crumbling infrastructure. We've got a lot of things to do, and we want to, need to move on and get that, make that happen. But Supervisor Fletcher, unfortunately, he definitely absolutely is a distraction right now to the work that needs to be done. Several days ago, I called for Mr. Fletcher's immediate resignation as a taxpayer should not be continuing to pay his salary. I've seen reports that he's getting anywhere between $25,000 to $35,000 during these six weeks, and that's just not right. Our sexual harassment training is an annual training that we all take. It's a thorough process, and it goes through different situations that every county worker is required to complete and participate in. In that training, a manager getting involved with a subordinate is one of the primary examples of what not to do. Even if it's consensual, it is not allowed. And that's the number one example used and precisely what Mr. Fletcher did. There are also alleged crimes that will be sorted out through court, but Mr. Fletcher admitted to the relationship with the subordinate at MTS. He was in a position of power as the Chair of MTS, and Ms. Figaroa was a subordinate, and they had the relationship. If someone did that here as a department head or a manager here at the county, we would have them removed immediately. The same rule should apply to Mr. Fletcher. He has let his constituents down. He has let San Diego County down, and now he needs to resign and step down immediately. She's the one who should be getting the help and support from all of us in the county to make sure this doesn't happen again to anyone else. We heard a very passionate testimony from a person who was a victim of sexual harassment. Ms. Figaroa is going through that right now. We have a critical decision also coming up before the Board of Supervisors regarding our new chief administrative officer. Mr. Fletcher had significant influence over the selection and interview process for our new chief administrative officer. I think we should reconsider and move, before moving forward, and restart the process of hiring our new chief administrative officer here, so that he has no influence on that process moving forward. I 100% agree with what we're doing today. Once again, thank you to our Chair for putting this item forward, and I'm happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for putting this on the agenda. I appreciate there's so much misinformation out there and people not understanding the constitutional process and how we move forward. So thank you for today. Thank you for allowing people to come forward and speak. I've always been concerned when an elected official vacates their office without representation. Sadly, while I served in the Senate, three senators went to jail, and for nine months, one district went without any, and that's roughly a million people went without any representation. I do have a quick question of staff, actually, not staff, our council. And that is, with the notification that Supervisor Fletcher gave, is it possible for him to rescind his resignation on the 15th?
The resignation that was submitted by the member, it is his discretion, and so until it is effective, it is his decision as to whether to return or not.
So it can be rescinded?
Correct.
I think that's important for people to understand, because my office has received a lot of calls where people are deeply concerned where I am on this, and none of us have any control over the process whatsoever. And I'm not suggesting that we should, because you get elected by your district, it's only your district that can remove you. So as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, he may resign, or he may be recalled, but there's not a lot of other choices. Is that correct?
Generally, correct. There is, there are certain operations of law, such as vacancies after absence of so many months, consecutive months and such, that could apply by operation of law, but the board itself doesn't have an independent authority to remove at this time in the absence of other actions having occurred outside of this board's control.
So...
(Inaudible) How about that? How about the injustice?
Yeah, I wasn't finished, but I wasn't going to compete. So, you know, I went back and I looked, and we've got a number of cities in District Four. We have two council members, two council members in Lamisa and two council members in Lemon Grove who have issued a statement, but the majority of both boards have not come out, taken a statement in either direction. And if only District Four can decide the outcome of this, and I was hoping that we would hear a lot more from District Four, why, I get people are very angry, and they want to lash out, and they have every right to. I really would caution that we look to District Four, they can only remove him, and they can only vote for the new person. We cannot. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, in the beginning, I issued a statement and said, "I absolutely don't condone his behavior." But I also understood, having gone through a similar process before, I had no say, and so my voice was pretty irrelevant. And we have no way either of voting to remove any of his benefits, because they're given to him by his district, by the mere fact that he was elected. What I did find interesting when I did the research is that Councilmember Scott Peters issued a statement, and in his statement, he said that one Fletcher should resign immediately, but he also said that the C A O search process should start over without input from Fletcher. We do control that process, and I'd like the board, you know, we can't talk under the Brown Act independently behind closed doors. We have to do it in the public. So I would like to present to the board to consider starting that process over, starting a process that's not tainted with all this controversy. And it's not the controversy so much as, I'm not a judge of a person's mental state, but if he was as sick as he stated that he's getting treatment for, we should take that into consideration, because the most important position, and Helen, thank you for doing such a lovely job, is the C A O. And so I want, I would like for us to reconsider reopening that process. Helen has agreed, and I don't mean to speak for you, but we did hire her up. It gives us a little more time, having a clean process that we can present to the people, because at some point, we're going to present our choices to the people, and we're going to have all these people coming back saying that this process was tainted. And I think for our county to move forward, because Supervisor Lawson Reamer, I agree with you, and I think for this process to move forward, we have a lot of challenges, and in those challenges, we have to be above reproach in our choice of C A O. So that's what I have to share. Again, Madam Chair, thank you for this day. Thank you for us on record allowing the public to understand how the process works, and that perhaps they should be calling elected officials in District Four who actually have say. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, with that, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present, voting aye.
Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank everybody who came and provided feedback and comments on this item. It's really important, and I want to just remind everyone that this board is committed to moving forward with the business of the people of San Diego County. And again, I want to thank the over 20,000 county employees who continue to work day to day to make sure that our constituents and our community continues to be served. So thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.